Good afternoon and welcome to the informational meeting Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. As always, we like to start with committee reports. Could we get an audit committee report, Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Audit Committee had a very productive meeting. Two audit reports were presented, the 340B pharmacy agreement and damage recovery billing. I won't get into the details since the council can expect to hear a report in the informational later this month or in early October, but they each generated some excellent discussion by the committee, even the council members, so that was good. There were also three audit follow-up reports, midco cash handling, the bid tax, and travel expenditures. Our internal auditors found that all recommendations from the original audit reports have been implemented or are in the process of being implemented. The committee also received an excellent overview of the Internal Audit Office, which I encourage all of you, council members and public, to take a look at, and we can set up a time later to hear about that, too, if our city clerk can find some time. Lastly, we discussed the status of the current 2022 audit plan. The Internal Audit Office has a solid plan to complete a good portion of the audits by the end of this year, but as you'll see in a few months, some of those will be carried over to 2023. Regarding the 2023 plan, very soon, the auditors will be sending out a survey as part of our annual risk assessment to identify potential audits for next year. We plan to meet again October 13th, where we will additionally discuss our audit plan, further discuss our internal controls used to conduct audits, and the presentation of reports. That's all I have to say today.
Thank you. Let's jump to the Metro Management Council. Councilor Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I attended the Metro Management Council on August 31st, and during that time, we got a director's report, which included kind of talking about some of the staffing issues that has been a major concern, and Sioux Falls is really not immune to what we're seeing nationally. There's a lot of challenges with keeping some of our operations staff. So there have been 16 staff resignations, 12 hired, and four conditional offers coming up. They've had 284 applications since February, and they're currently trying to recruit more. Fortunately, and I just want to say a big thank you to those staff members who have stepped up to work overtime, so roughly 2,500 hours of overtime this year. So, thank you so much. And there's a National Emergency Number Association that set forth to kind of a standard on which they should be answering phone calls, and nationally, they're saying 90% of calls in the first 15 minutes. Here at Metro Communications, it's at 96%, with 95 calls within the first 20 seconds, set forth by the N E N A. In Metro Communications, it's 98%. So they're doing just an incredible job. They've been able to transfer suicide prevention calls to the 211 helpline, and that started in November 1st of 2021, and so far, 66 calls have met that requirement. Also during this meeting, we authorized Metro Communications to give $215,000 from their reserve funds until the city or Minnehaha County can provide reimbursement for things such as computer monitors, various other computer parts, switches, and related components. Just with the rising cost, they want to purchase now instead of waiting until the cost goes up significantly in the next year. We also reviewed financial statements, and our next meeting will be mid-December. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Move on to the Homeless Task Force. Councilor McCaras, please.
Thank you, Chairman. We had our fourth task force meeting last night, I think maybe potentially our most productive yet to date. Got into a lot of details about the shelter capacity in our community, upcoming challenges with winter. So right now, we've got, as we've got a couple of different groups working on specific elements of how to help with that. We've got one group specifically working with panhandling, individuals on the street, how do we engage with them, and they'll be bringing something back to the task force to consider, and then the task force will bring that to us. And then last night, we assigned out a variety of different specific things to individual members of the task force. So I feel like things are going along very well. It's a slow process, but we've got a very engaged task force. I think that's very informed on the subject, learning a lot. We didn't bring forth any things for the budget this year. I think we all recognize that that was just too hard of a push, and rather than doing something aggressive just to get it in, we want to do it right. And so I've been in communication with Director Pritchett. I believe the council will receive some sort of recommendation early, mid-November, and I would expect supplemental appropriation recommendations to be coming as well as a result of the work of the task force. But good work being done, but still a lot more meat to put on the bone over the next couple of months.
Thank you. I'd recommend, if any of the councilors have further questions, to contact these committee members or anybody in public, know how to reach them if you've got more specific questions. That'd be awesome. At this time, we have council remarks. Any other council remarks? I'd just like to make one quick comment. As I arrived home late last night, I saw four young middle schoolers and high schoolers out playing catch, four of them, four different high schools. O'Gorman, Sioux Falls Christian, Roosevelt, Lincoln, playing catch out there, getting along very nicely. So sometimes we worry about the youth and what we have in Sioux Falls. I guess alleviated a lot of my concerns, so we do have a lot of good things going on for the city. With that, we'll move on to the Main Street Business Improvement District Growth Plan. Joe Batchelor, please.
Joe Batchelor, DTSF President, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm joined here today with, by Anita Wech, the Chair of the DTSF Board, Cal Raff, DTSF Board Director, and Erica Malley, who is a member of the Main Street Business Improvement District Board. So we're going to be talking about a critical component of not just downtown's growth and progress, but the city's growth and progress, really, and that is the Business Improvement So we've got a lot of development going on in downtown, and I think we can all agree that our best days are ahead of us. But I think if you were to peer around the corner of what comes after this once-in-a-lifetime development, I think in 10 to 15 years, we're going to say that this was just the tip of the iceberg. With all this growth and development comes growing pains, and I think we have to ask ourselves as a community, how do we want to address those growing pains? Do we want to be proactive, or do we want to be reactive? And so what I'm going to be proposing is a proactive approach to addressing the issues and opportunities that are going to be facing us as a community. So, let's get the right button here. There we go. So, you know, I think, we hear it all the time, we heard it yesterday at Rotary, the golfers that come into town for Sanford International say that their favorite part of Sioux Falls is coming to downtown. We think that this all just happens by magic, but it doesn't. It happens through investment and through stewardship. And it's really the property owners that make, help make downtown happen. They make downtown a more marketable and appealing place by investing in the Business Improvement District, which allows DTSF to provide these essential services that a lot of times go unseen, picking up litter, watering the flowers, emptying the trash, you know, engaging with people on the street, connecting them with shopping destinations, and maybe someone who might need to be connected with the link. It's the property owners that can really help downtown reach its full potential by making a strategic investment in the Business Improvement District to best address those issues and opportunities that we'll face. I want to take a moment here to provide a little bit of context with where we are at as a downtown. Now, this isn't a reason why we need to change things, but this is just information to show you how downtown Sioux Falls stacks up compared to the downtowns of a couple of sister cities. We have the largest downtown geographically, and we bring in the least amount of assessment revenue. Now, I will note here, I did not, I forgot to update the amount of bid revenue this last year. It's actually about $5,500 more than what I have up there on the screen, but still, DTSF, when you look at what we bring in from assessment revenue on a per-acre basis, we're approaching half of what Rapid City brings in and about a quarter of what downtown Fargo brings in. And we do it with seven full-time equivalent employees. Looking at the services that we provide, we provide all the same services, in some cases, more. These are services that are carried out by people. We've tried to automate as much as we can, but you can't automate trash removal, you can't automate event planning, or marketing, or hospitality, watering flowers, removing the snow, removing your feedie, sweeping the sidewalks, or even telling people to walk their bicycle on the sidewalk. That's what we do with the revenue that is generated through the Business Improvement District. So what do we want to do moving forward? We launched an ambassador program about 15 months ago, and we've received some really positive feedback about that. Our downtown ambassador has had the opportunity to engage with over 1,000 people, oftentimes connecting people with destinations, answering questions, being an ambassador of downtown, and in some cases, doing homeless outreach. You know, with the Homeless Task Force, I see the ambassador program as being one partner in a comprehensive solution for addressing that issue. Our safety ambassadors could help alleviate calls from Metro 911, and as a result, probably save the money, the city a lot of money by diverting calls from the police department. So it's been a valued service. We've been working with consultants for the last 18 months, and between the two of them, they've worked in the downtown industry for about 70 years of combined experience. They say we need about eight to 10 ambassadors. What we want to do, we would be asking for two more ambassadors. It doesn't get us there, but it's enough to show the value that that program can have. We just want the opportunity to prove the value of that program. So that's what we have in this growth plan. We have a number of other services up there. We're not going to be able to take a bite of this whole apple, really with what we're asking for. We're focused on ambassadors, maintenance, and marketing. We have a few other services up there just to show you where we'd like to go with the bid growth plan, but, you know, with retail recruitment, we've got a lot of great economic development organizations in the city, but when it comes to retail recruitment and retention, DTSF can really make a difference there. We have made a difference in the past with our retail incubator program, but it was a victim of its own success. We essentially have a vacancy rate that represents what the turnover is right now. We've taken it from 12% to 15% for ground floor retail and reduced that down to about 3%. So what's the next iteration of retail recruitment? That would come in a few years, hopefully, but we have it as part of this plan to share with everybody what the vision is, for what the bid can do, what the impact could be. Enhanced maintenance is another one. We provide snow removal in key locations downtown. We'd like to be able to expand that. You know, we clear off the crossings so people can cross streets without having to jump over big windrows. We clear the snow around the parking meters as well. That's a service that we heard from over 100 stakeholders through surveys, through interviews, that they'd like to see part of an enhanced maintenance program. We've got gum stains that have been on the sidewalk probably for decades, you know? There's a deeper level of maintenance that we can provide that are, that's typically provided in other downtowns. We would just like to get in line with what industry best practices are there. With marketing, we heard that the stakeholders would like to see DTSF provide a little bit more funding and a little bit more of a robust service when it comes to marketing. And the thing that we heard is that, in particular, they want to help us demystify the parking system in downtown, and so that's something where DTSF can come alongside the city and help out. At this morning's DTSF member meeting, we heard from the parking manager, Matt Nelson, did a great job talking about where they're at and where they're headed. Their, their marketing budget is $0, and so we can help. We can help the city potentially generate more revenue through the parking system by demystifying that using our marketing services. And then there's event support. Right now, the bid, a lot of our events really are self-funded, they're funded through sponsorships, participation fees, beverage sales. The bid, the bid really supports the parade of lights, and it's really just staff time on that. Everything else is supported through sponsorships. And then we have our winter event grant program as well. And with that, we launched the winter carnival that the Boys and Girls Club spearheaded. We pivoted last year with the Winter Games. We would like to breathe some more life into the winter event grant program and really get a winter festival here in downtown Sioux Falls to really embrace that season and bring more activity to downtown. Moving forward, you know, we do a lot of events, big events, we do them well, a lot of different organizations do. There are days when there's no events going on downtown. We'd like to activate downtown, enhance its vibrancy by working with local artists, performers, street musicians, and that's one way in which we can provide some support through the bid. And we've got a program that we're ready to queue up called AMP, Art Music Performance and Theater, but we just don't have the funding right now, or the staff support. So lastly on this list is wayfinding. That was kind of part of a larger category. We heard that small capital projects are something that our stakeholders would like to see, and we're not talking about reconstructing sidewalks or anything like that, just small capital projects. Wayfinding was the one that was most often mentioned to us from our, in the interviews and from the survey results. And so that's something where, you know, I think that we can help provide a leadership role, and with wayfinding, you know, you're able to put those breadcrumbs out there to keep people downtown longer, allow them to discover new parts of downtown that they may not otherwise have known about. So that's where we'd like to be able to make a difference. I think if you look at the results that DTSF has helped provide the lead on in the past, I think the results speak for themselves. You know, I'm not going to say that we are solely responsible for all of these results, but we definitely play a key role in it. We've seen foot traffic increase nearly 15% in the last five years. We've seen 1,000 more residents in downtown since 2014. We're at 3,500 residents right now. We stand to gain another 1,500 and a half, and that would put us at 5,000 people living in downtown, which would make downtown the 20th-largest town in South Dakota if it were to stand on its own. We've got more people working downtown, like I said, vacancy rates have dropped, and we've seen property values increase. So with that plan, how are we going to pay for it? Well, we have an assessment formula that has been in place for 33 years. That's a long time to go without changing an assessment formula. A lot of business improvement districts will reauthorize at least every 10 years, sometimes every two years. Industry standards is about every three to five. We've gone 33 years without really looking at this. It's long overdue. So what we have right now is a cap. Properties, essentially, if you have a property that is worth $1 million, that building is going to be assessed at the same amount that a 5, 10, 15, $100 million building, we don't have any, but essentially, that cap is a barrier right now to our growth. And so what we're proposing is lifting that cap and replacing that with a second tier that would assess all the value above $1 million at 50 cents per $1,000. And then we have a similar, a similar structure with the land. So, you know, why, why am I here talking to you when it's property owners that are going to pay for this? Well, you're part of the process, and we'll need to, we'll come back and ask for you to entertain an ordinance lifting that ordinance, lifting that cap. The city is essentially a pass-through for this. This would not cost the city any extra money. We're asking, we're asking the property owners to make this investment, and we've done outreach efforts this summer. That really began with a postcard mailer that went out in mid-June for a public meeting that was held on July 21st. The mayor kicked that meeting off for us, talking about the importance of downtown. We're grateful for, for him being there. We had some good attendance. I've talked to a lot of the affected property owners, and, you know, we've, we've gotten some good support from our property owners thus far. We went to the bid board, and the bid board unanimously passed a recommendation six to zero that the city council passed an ordinance lifting the cap and replacing it with this second tier. We're talking about, we're talking about, about a third of the properties in downtown that would be impacted. That's where we focused our outreach efforts. We've got 46 properties that are capped for buildings, 83 that are capped for land. In total, it's 88 properties altogether, so it's, it's a, it's a portion of all the properties in downtown. And so, like I said, you know, we've, we've had the outreach efforts going on this summer. Responses have been good. I just want to take a moment to recognize the members of the bid steering committee that have helped out along the way. We've got some community leaders that have been instrumental with their input and guidance, and, you know, this is really a, a community effort that we're trying to make some progress on. And so hopefully, we'll be coming back in a few weeks to talk about an ordinance changing the assessment methodology. So with that, I will pause and open it up to discussion.
Thank you for your presentation. Councilor's questions. Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe, you were talking about coordinating art or doing something with art as a part of this plan. Can you just kind of elaborate that on, on that a little? And then maybe just my recommendation is, you know, come to the council meeting tonight and, you know, we're going to try and coordinate art in a specific way and work with those stakeholders to actually have a centralized, you know, downtown presence, or a, or a centralized presence in the city. So can you kind of talk about how you're going to use those dollars for that as well? Because I don't want to duplicate services, although it's your members that are funding this anyway.
Right. So, you know, I, first, this is, it's a concept at this point. You know, I know that the city council this evening will be, will be weighing in on whether or not the city should support a full-time art position, art coordinator. My understanding is that, you know, that person will be a liaison in charge of processes for those public-private types of efforts, and then you still have the Sioux Falls Arts Council that really helps connect the network of artists to work in tandem with the arts coordinator. And so, you know, I would see the AMP program really being a, a program that both these two leaders in the arts community could work with DTSF on. It's, it's a source of funding framed in these, these public presentations of art, supporting local artists to display their, their craft, their expertise in public spaces in downtown, whether that's a mural going up on a large blank wall, or, you know, an artist, you know, playing a, you know, an acoustic set in a, in a plaza in downtown. So we're, we're a sort of a vehicle for them to tap into, if you will. And like I said, it's, it's still in that conceptual phase, and I think that, you know, there's, there's opportunity to further define that if that opportunity should arise.
Other questions? Councilor McCaras?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Joe, for the good work in downtown. Two questions. First, sorry if I missed this information, but the consultants recommended having eight to 10 different ambassadors. The current proposal of the cap lifting would add two additional ambassadors. Where are you currently at for a number of ambassadors?
We have one.
You have one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Secondly, how would the, how would the changing of the downtown boundaries impact this plan or accelerate the overall growth of downtown Sioux Falls and the need for the ambassador program?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I think that if the downtown boundaries were to be expanded, we would have to probably look at creating different zone districts with different levels of service based on what the needs are of those sub-districts. So, you know, I think right now, the study area goes from Grange to Cliff and 18th Street up to Rice or Russell, but I think the area that people are most zeroed in on is that area east of the railroad tracks, East 8th Street, around Drake Springs. And, you know, you have a lot of social services in that area, and if you were to, I know you've talked to Chief Toome about this, you know, a lot of the police calls for downtown go to that area. I don't think that we're going to be able to alleviate a majority of those police calls, but I think there are some areas where DTSF can come alongside and help out. It really depends on what level of investment the property owners in that area are willing to make, but as it sits right now with the current formula, we probably would not be able to provide much. A change is needed to the cap for us to really make any kind of impact in any new areas for downtown, simply because that area doesn't have the density that the rest of downtown has, has right now, so.
Thank you. Councilor Rockel?
Joe, I think the, at least, I know it's just, just starting, but the ambassador program so far has been really great, and I'd love to see that grow. Just for, for me and maybe some other folks maybe watching at home, can you explain a little bit more what the wayfinding, you know, I've, from time to time, see people downtown, it looks like they could use some help finding their way, but I think you mean something more than that.
So wayfinding, it, it starts, it, it's really to, like I said, provide those breadcrumbs for people to connect with destinations. And so for the driver, it starts on the interstate with the interstate signage and directing people to downtown, and then once they get downtown, directing them to the parking structures to park. You know, once they become a pedestrian, it's having those directories on the sidewalk. We have four of them up and down Phillips Avenue, and then we have a number of smaller ones mounted onto light posts throughout downtown. And that was really just kind of a pilot program to see if that was something that was, that was used and appreciated, and we've gotten pretty good feedback on that. Now, if you were to go to more of a tourist destination, you might see, you know, those, those streetlight poles with the directional signs that say, you know, such and such is a five-minute walk, or, you know, 500 feet, or something like that. That's probably the next level of where we go with, with wayfinding. And then there are some creative applications as well with smartphone technology and apps.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. And even virtual reality, not virtual reality, augmented reality as well. So that's really next level, and that would take a much higher level of investment. So it's, like I said, this change that we're asking for is really going to get us, you know, some added ambassadors, allow us to beef up the maintenance, marketing, and possibly the events. When it comes to wayfinding and it comes to retail retention and recruitment, that's going to be a few years down the line when more funding comes in, or more, more revenue is generated.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Suber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Joe, for being here. Sorry, I'm a little bit late today. I appreciate our visit yesterday, a little bit about this. What kind of money do you anticipate these increased assessments are going to generate?
So if you were to look at just the 2022 property values and apply this formula, it would generate about another $160,000. would generate about another $160,000 through the Business Improvement District. Now, when Sharapa II and Steel District come online, that would bring in about another $115,000, but that's a really rough estimate. We don't know exactly where that property value is going to land for those two properties. And so, yeah, it's, it's, it's not exact right now, but we really need to get, I would say, you know, that 160 really gets us to those two ambassadors that we really want to be able to demonstrate the impact that the bid can have. You know, when you talk to industry experts, it's, you know, per person with salary, benefits, supplies, training, it's about $65,000 to $75,000 per person. So that, yeah, that, that's really kind of driving it is these ambassadors that we need to get, and, and, yeah, so.
So you anticipate 115 on, for Sharapa when they come in on top of the 160?
That's our, I call it a guesstimate.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions, counselors? I just got a couple of quick ones. German Fest coming up?
We had it.
You had it? I missed it?
Yeah. Well, we didn't have it. The Sister City organization put it on.
I'm so far behind the times.
Remedy's got their Oktoberfest coming up. You can take that in.
Okay. Let's, I got a question about the trolley, and I keep coming back to the trolley because people like the trolley. And I think as downtown expands, more opportunities north and south. If you're at Falls Park and you have a nice time, want to come up to the middle of downtown and get a piece of cake, the trolley's a great avenue. Repeat for me and the council and the public on how that is funded and what the future looks like.
So for the last five years, it's been funded through sponsors. We've had some great support through sponsorships from Sanford, Marsh McLennan, and Lewis Drug. But that, that sun sets, that's, that sponsorship agreement concluded at the end of this trolley season. One of the things that we're trying to figure out, you know, these trolleys are over 20 years old, I think they're 22 years old. We have a third-party operator. I say we, it's really a contract between this operator and the city because the city owns the trolleys, and the operator is really responsible for the maintenance of these short of anything catastrophic like an engine or a transmission going out. And they're having a hard time keeping them on the road, and so it's kind of at the point where, you know, the city needs to decide if they want to, if they want to buy new vehicles or not. And so it's, the program, the future of it, kind of depends on, on that. Otherwise, you know, it's kind of trying to figure out how to take the, the current vehicles that we have and, and making them operate one year at a time.
Just one follow-up question, then. The operational budget that you get from donations, what, do you have an idea what that number is?
So when you say donations and operational budget, are you referring to all the sponsorships that we have for our events and programs, our events?
No, just for the trolleys.
Just for the trolley?
Just for the trolleys.
So that is, this year, it was, I believe, $57,000, and it provides very limited service. But yeah, $57,000. We're able to operate the trolley about 45 hours each week, and we try to operate that when there's the most foot traffic downtown, which is typically, you know, Thursday through Sunday. We do operate it on Tuesday and Wednesday as well. But, you know, I, I think that if we were able to provide more reliable service, you know, over an expanded period of time, we would probably see the ridership numbers also increase. So it's been a limiting factor with the trolley. It's, it's been a little bit unpredictable as to when it's going to come around, when it's going to operate. We've tried to communicate that as clearly as possible, but, you know, it, for, for it to be a transportation service, it needs to be reliable, you know, and convenient. And this, we've really, we've, we've really formatted more as an experience for people, for tourists in particular.
Okay. I appreciate that. Counselors, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Okay.
Look forward to coming back and having the vote on when we change the, if we change and when we change the structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
At this time, it's public input. We're up for anybody who would like to speak on the subjects we spoke on today. Seeing nobody, Counselor Jensen?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of consulting with legal counsel or reviewing communications from legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters pursuant to SDC L 125, 2, 3.
Second call.
I'm moved in second. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Thank you. We can clear the room? I appreciate it very much. Thank you for attending.